We're calling to order the Tuesday, February 20th, 2024, 6:00 PM, School Board Regular Meeting. And we're going to start by the presentation of colors. Please come forward. The Cadet First Lieutenant Landon Smith, Arabella Allen, Anna Hertz, and Sergeant Jacob McClure, and Major Thomas Hall. Okay, please be seated. Roll call.
Brendan Wong, present.
Colleen Conklin, present.
Cheryl Messero.
Sally Hunt.
Kristy Chong, present.
Wolfery, present.
LaShaka Moore.
Okay, we are going to move to special announcements. We have 2.0 run proclamations, resolutions, legislative updates. Do we have any this evening? No. Okay, so no proclamations this evening. 2.02, Music in Our Schools Month proclamation presented by Amy Fulmer.
Good evening, Board, Chair, LaShaka Moore, Superintendent. I'm excited to be here once again with you to proclaim Music in Our Schools Month. I have to say just a few words and say to you, imagine a classroom where students rush into the door, they rush to get their music, they rush to their seat, and they wait for that downbeat. Everyone's engaged, and everyone is seen and heard in a music classroom. Children can make beautiful music, but more importantly, music makes beautiful children. So here we go. Whereas, for more than 30 years, March has been officially designated by the National Association of Music Education as Music in Our Schools Month, encouraging communities across the nation to focus on music education, and whereas, music education is part of a well-rounded education for every student as outlined in the Every Student Succeeds Act, and whereas, the purpose of this celebration is to raise awareness of the lasting positive impact of music education on the academic, personal, and professional growth of our students, and whereas, music education shapes the way our students understand themselves and the world around them, allowing for a deep engagement with learning, and whereas, Music in Our Schools Month reminds us that school is where all children should have access to music, and whereas, music educators, students, and communities throughout Florida demonstrate the importance of a quality music education program to the lives of young people. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that March 2024 is Music in Our Schools Month in Flagler County, and be it further resolved that Flagler Schools encourages our citizens to celebrate and acknowledge every day, but especially in March, that music education is an essential part of every student's well-rounded education, adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof, held on this 20th day of February 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Fulmer.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and we are going to move on to 2.03, Crossing Guard Appreciation Day proclamation presented by Mr. Thomas Woolleyhan.
Good evening, Chair Furry, School Board Member Superintendent Moore. I'm joined here at the podium this afternoon, or this evening, with Commander Jen Nirocky and Chief David Williams of the Flagler County Sheriff's Office. A little background on this, Commander Nirocky with the county did reach out to me early in February, actually in early in January, trying to figure out when the actual proclamation was, and every year it does come out from the governor's office, and we were trying to make sure that we did recognize our crossing guards that we do have at our school sites. So we are going to read the proclamation of the School Crossing Guard Appreciation Day in Florida, signed by the governor. So, "Whereas, the state of Florida is home to millions of school-aged children whose safety and well-being is fundamental, and whereas, each school day, regardless of weather, thousands of loyal school crossing guards ensure the safety of our children and families as they arrive to and depart from school, and whereas, the state of Florida prioritized public safety and the significant role of education to ensure the protection of our children and crossing guards who assist them, and whereas, the Ramone Turnquist School Crossing Guard Act in Florida statute requires local government entities that administer school crossing guard programs to train their crossing guards according to state guidelines to ensure the preparedness of these vital professionals in our communities, and whereas, the commendable service, responsibility, and professionalism demonstrated by our crossing guards is recognized annually through the Florida Department of Transportation's School Crossing Guard of the Year Award, and whereas, Florida's school crossing guards provide essential public safety and service to our communities and deserve acknowledgement and praise for the diligent efforts to protect our children and families, and whereas, school bus and pedestrian safety resources to establish supplementary safety measures for our school crossing guards and the schoolchildren, families, and pedestrians they protect are further provided by the Florida Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles, and whereas, the first Friday of February is an opportunity for Floridians to recognize and celebrate the essential service and steadfast dedication these admirable individuals provide to protect Florida's schoolchildren across the state. Now therefore, I, Ron, the Governor Ron DeSantis, State of Florida, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes, best wishes to all observing February 2nd, 2024, as School Crossing Guard Appreciation Day in Florida. So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Williams and Commander to speak about those individuals that are our crossing guards.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. What can I say about the school crossing guards? They do a fantastic job, and if you think about the conditions under which they worked, the weather, hot, cold, rain, shine, most of them are a little up there in age, you really have to commend the job that they do. Nothing's more important than keeping our children safe, and especially with the increase in traffic, and citizens that have moved here to Flagler County, the school zones are getting busier. So they really do a commendable job, and without them, we would have to have deputy sheriffs out there doing it, so we really appreciate them out there every day, half a day, partial days, they don't even work full days, but they still do it, and they do it without complaint. So we appreciate them, and we thank them. Commander.
And I will say that Superintendent Moore, myself, Superintendent Moore, Mr. Foley, we were on the South Side, and I believe Angela Dawson and Angela O'Brien recognized ones on the North Side, and something that Ms. Moore did speak to me, that we are going to go above and beyond next first Friday of February. So playing on that, it's already on my calendar, so we're, look for that coming.
Yes.
I would add, it was so nice to be out there. We were able to take pictures with all of our crossing guards and give them a small gift, but what I love about it is as we're out there, they are calling every student that crosses by name, and it was just a great way to start our day, to see our schools that are celebrating our crossing guards. So thank you to them, thank you for all that you guys do too, to support them in helping to ensure that our kids can get to school safely.
Yes, thank you very much. Oh, yeah, for a picture. Okay, so now we'll move on to spotlights, and first up is 3.01, Superintendent Strategic Plan Spotlight. Anything to add?
Yes.
My spotlight will be combined with the spotlight of our Spelling Bee champion, which I'm super excited about. I also want to recognize that following a favorable vote from the School Board for Action Item 11.01, we do have with us in the audience Ms. Tamara Payne, who will join us as the Assistant Principal at Banell Elementary School, and so we will welcome her shortly, so if I could just recognize her once the Board takes action later in the meeting, but we're super excited for her to join the team.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. So we will move on to 3.02, Flagler County Education Foundation Spotlight, Ms. Teresa Rizzo. She does.
Not just me, although I would take all the credit. So actually, my spotlight tonight is to show some gratitude, is to say thank you to all of you for allowing us to always speak about the Education Foundation and the impact we have in Flagler County, but there's a few special thank yous I need to give tonight, and that is to our community that came out to celebrate our 20th Annual Mardi Gras Celebration, along with the incredible support that we had from our school system. We had a principal from every single school, including Imagine, and that was just absolutely incredible. Our superintendent has set that precedent, and we are grateful, so thank you. We were able to raise enough money to give eight students four-year scholarships to a Florida college, and if you know how much college is these days, that's an incredible amount of money that our community was able to provide for us, so we are so excited about that. We have another great program that has, we are starting with Shmento Law. They are celebrating 50 years this year in Flagler County, and they are starting the Shmento Cares Program through the Flagler County Education Foundation. This program will support our families in transition, or what the public knows is our homeless students, and we currently have over 270 of those students in our county, and we are willing and ready and able to make a difference with those families, so we are excited and very grateful to Shmento for starting that program for us. And also, we could not do what we do at the Education Foundation without the leadership and the guidance and the volunteer time of our board. We have a 14-member board, and we cannot do what we do without them, and so I just wanted to give them a public thank you as well. Hopefully, they're watching, so thank you all.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, so now we're moving on to District Spelling Bee Spotlight by Celeste Akerman.
Good evening, School Board Chair Furry, School Board Members, and Superintendent Moore. I have the honor tonight to present to you our 2024 Spelling Bee Champion Giles Platt. Giles is an eighth grader at Indian Trails Middle School. He participates in Future Problem Solvers and is in debate. He, I've been told, he is an avid reader and has always loved learning, and one of his favorite things to do is to listen to music and read the lyrics at the same time, and that was a strategy that really helped him out because his champion word was one of those words that he went through with a lyric, which was vicarious. So we are very proud of him, and I'm excited to share this honor with you. Do you want to say anything? Did you want to say anything? Okay. All right, let's take a picture.
I will add that he is right now making a decision on which high school he will attend, and he is, it's a big decision. Have you already made it?
Yep.
What, which high school will you be attending?
Flagler Palm Coast.
Flagler Palm Coast High School.
Right here, one, two, three. Congratulations. Those were all wonderful spotlights, and we're going to move on to Approval of Minutes, 4.01 to 4.03. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Chong and a second by Dr. Conklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to, are there any? We'll move on to, are there any additions or changes to the agenda for this evening?
No.
Okay. So we will continue to 6.01 Public Comment. Do we have anybody that has signed up for comment on agenda items?
No.
Okay, so we will, is there anybody that would like to speak that had not signed up? Okay, seeing nobody approaching, we'll move on and close Public Comment. And now we'll move to 6.02 Science Instruction Materials, Public Comment. Seeing no one approach, we will move on from that. And we're going to go on to Finance Consent. Now, as we go through the consent items, just please be aware that we have workshop these items. So this area of the agenda tends to move pretty quickly, but we have reviewed all this and it's just our formality to approve these things here at the business meeting. So on Financial Consent, 7.01 through 7.06, I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Massaro, a second by Ms. Chong. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're moving on to Technology and Innovation Consent, 8.01. Board Approval to Award of Contract for Request for Proposal. So I need a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Conklin, a second by Ms. Chong. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Board, the motion passes unanimously. Number nine, Academic Services Consent, 9.01 through 9.04. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
From Dr. Conklin? Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Massaro and a second by Dr. Conklin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. We now have Operational Services, 10.01. I need a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Hunt and a second by Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Human Resource Services Consent, 11.01. Need a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Chong and a second by Ms. Massaro. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so that finishes our consent items. And we are now at, let's see, is this here? Oh, so we already passed the number 11. Okay, so we're going to move on to Old Business.
And Chair, I'm sorry, before we go to Old Business, can we now recognize under 11.01, the Assistant Principal for Banell Elementary School, Ms. Tamara Payne?
Absolutely.
If you would come forward, we'll get a quick picture. Congratulations.
Sure. Pretty good, this one. There you go.
Get them up here, right? There you go.
Congratulations.
All right, one, yep, one, two, three. One more, please, one, two. Okay, we will now move to 21.01 Old Business. Do we have any old business to discuss?
I just have a quick question. The, what is the test called for our student athletes that we were considering? Is that what it was? Is there, I think you have it slated for, I just want to make sure, because I thought that that was a certain time of the year that that's done. I just want to make sure that it's scheduled for us.
We have requested the information from Advent Health. It will not make policy for this year. However, we will be bringing that before you as a, as a, an item for the board to consider. So we have requested that information from Advent Health.
But don't have the expectation that we're having it done for?
For this, these spring rounds, we will not.
Wait for the next school year.
Into the next school year, yes. Some of the recommendations have also been to slowly roll it out so that people get an understanding for it before just moving full scale with it being mandatory. But that is going to be coming back before the board in, in, in March, if not April.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Not seeing any more old business. We'll move on to new business, 22.01. Is there any new business? Seeing none, we will move forward to Public Comment. This is open to any item on or off the agenda. Do we have anybody signed up for Public Comment this evening?
Yes, Chanel Channing.
Okay, Ms. Channing, if you please come forward.
Thank you, Board. Chanel Channing.
Welcome.
Palm Coast. Well, the reason people can't speak on the agenda, there's really nothing here to speak about, other than awards. And, you know, I've been asking for the freedom for parents and the community to speak upfront on the public comments. So now I'm going to use another term that also has to do with the First Amendment, and that is freedom to assemble. The parents and the community would have the freedom to assemble if they could speak upfront. If they were to say, well, let's meet and, and come together and speak on an issue. If they were to say, wow, you can, let's come together at the end of the meeting. Well, what time is the end of the meeting? And when these people are very busy, as they are, parents especially, they don't have time to say, well, let's just all wait for a meeting to end. So then therefore, in a very subtle way, there is no freedom to assemble by not letting them come here at the beginning of the meeting. And there are certain issues that just don't get on the agenda. For instance, here we have a crisis right now that we're facing where we, we have the county commissioners saying they're not going to come up with the, the money for these, these security officers basically at the schools. You actually have, right now, you have the press outside wondering if there's people who are going to assemble and speak about this issue, and they're not here. And the reason they're not here is because they can't, they don't really have the freedom to assemble, so they don't focus on coming together. Where before, as you know, they would have done that. But because of that incident, now a couple of years ago, it seems like, there was that fear that happened, a post-traumatic fear that this board is still riveting from. And you really don't have to be in that state of fear. And I think for these kids, they need to see that you can handle a group of people being here, maybe you don't know how to, you know, maybe they're a little rambunctious, but as adults, you can handle them. I think these kids need to feel that way. They need to know there's adults. You know, there, there's that complaint that kids are not wanting to grow up. They need to see the adults. So it's time that they see the adults before them and that you let these parents and community come here and not just have the awards in the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anybody else signed up for Public Comment?
Yes, Jessica Matthews.
Okay, Ms. Matthews. Welcome.
Hello. I'm actually here because of the SRO situation that I read. Not having the deputies in our schools really should not be an option. Our deputies are amazing. They're there and it makes us as parents feel a lot safer sending our kids to school when we see the things that are happening. I'm a little disturbed that this letter was sent the day before the anniversary of the Parkland Marjorie Stoneman Douglas situation, which I think was very untimely. But furthermore, I just want to know from your standpoint, and I know Ms. Moore has a meeting, I believe, on the 28th, but our deputies in our school need to be a mandatory thing. So if the county's not willing to pay for it, which I mean, I can tell you, I will be going to a county meeting to figure this out, but what does the board plan on doing to making, to make sure that our kids are protected? I understand that there's shortages in public safety and there's staffing situations with fire departments and police departments right now. So I don't know the reason behind why Ms. Petito decided they weren't going to fund this anymore. But whether it's civilians, I, I know it was discussed before and people did not want that, but there's got to be some sort of protection. And personally, I want our deputies in there. So I don't know what you guys need to do, but there needs to be a discussion, there needs to be something, but we need our deputies and that's the bottom line. One of the comments that was, the quotes that was actually in the article was that Sheriff Rick Staley in the recent, in recent past has repeatedly said that he is not opposed to supplementing his ranks with additional security such as armed civilians, but he has been opposed to any approach that would in any way replace them. So that's from our sheriff, that he does not want them replaced by armed civilians. He would like it enhanced with them. So I just find it very disturbing that our county is pulling that out. And I just want to know from you guys, what is, what are some of the things that you have as options that you're planning to do to fix that? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker?
Peta Johnson.
Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
How's everyone doing tonight? So I personally, myself, do not have kids in the school system, but as Ms. Matthews had stated, I have a great concern with not having our resource officers in the school system. I'm running for local office in Palm Coast, and one of the things that I am constantly brought to my attention is, and I think this is where the school board could really take an active approach on this, is there's a lot of misinformation as to, if, people don't even understand that you guys exist, quite frankly, as the school board. A lot of people think Palm Coast has a lot of direct influences to who funds the deputies and the resource officers. Flagler County takes 42% of the ad valorem tax from Palm Coast, and a lot of that is subsidized into our sheriff's office. You guys have impact fees that are addressed from the developers. There's a bunch of different funding. So on behalf of the constituents of Palm Coast and people that do have children in the school system, if, I, I think it would be extremely pertinent and beneficial, and I don't know any of you from Adam, other than what I've read in the newspapers. And as of lately, it's been a little bit messy, but I think the transparency is key in this process and really getting to the issue and working with all of the parties, Flagler County, Palm Coast, the school board, getting everyone on the same page to bring together a cohesive situation. Because quite frankly, it is unacceptable if we do not have trained deputies in our schools putting forth the protection that our children not only deserve but need. Because quite frankly, we live in a dangerous world and people have issues and people do crazy things, and there is no way to guarantee tomorrow, but we can try to prevent it and put measures in place by having a properly trained deputy, not an armed civilian. I mean, I know it's a catchy idea and it's great, but we need deputies and properly trained people. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker?
That's it.
Okay, is there anybody that didn't sign up that would like to speak?
She didn't get an opportunity, Sean.
Okay, if you, you can come forward, it's no problem, yeah.
Welcome.
I don't get along with computers, I think. Anyway, at this age, hi. At this age, I don't have children in school here, but I care about all the kids. And as a Palm Coast taxpayer, I care for those kids. Probably many of them are future leaders. And I am very concerned that this county, which takes out of my ad valorem taxes 42%, and the city of Palm Coast only receives 24%, with all those taxes they take from us, besides the surtax that they, in 2012, they took a bigger share from Palm Coast, away from our roads. Okay, with all that, I can't understand how come the county has this audacity to come and tell us that they're going to pull the 1.4 million of our taxes, not paying those, those sheriff officers train that are in the school to protect our kids? Because the situation with the school violence has not stopped. Thank God, looks like yet, we don't have it here, but it's, it's happening every day all over the nation, too often and too tragic. And we need to do anything we can to prevent that. And we need those kids, you know, protected by our trained people. We cannot have here this outsourced to private agency because it won't work. I only trust our sheriff on this, our law enforcement. So please, you haven't said nothing on the agenda. I know that maybe it's not your decision, it's their decision, but I can guarantee you right now that if these county commissioners vote to take this 1.4 million away from our children in the school, all those that voted for us won't be elected. And this, the city of Palm Coast, with a hundred, over 102,000 residents, will speak for that at the ballot box. So please stand for this, those kids and be on the side of the Palm Coasters at least, that are the biggest, one of the biggest cities in Volusia and Flagler County. We made it moving here, we love it, and be with us for the children and demand that this should not change. Also, I have a big question. What is this big tower in the middle of the high school when other cities and counties in the nation have them 5G towers, no less than 1,000 feet from any home, school or hospital? Whose idea was that? Has the parents concerned? But you have to understand too, that those parents have kids in the school and maybe they don't want payback for certain questions, you know, and they just resign themselves to accept anything. Sometimes when you have kids in school, and I had kids in school many, many years ago, and I know how they feel, mom, don't go and speak, you know? And that's, that's could be one of the reasons why you don't see parents here. So, and that's a reality. I had kids in school too. One of them is already a veteran of the Navy, but they were concerned. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anybody else that signed up? Would you like to come forward? Yeah, please go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Crystal Kirkland. I have two children that are currently in the Flagler County school systems. And seeing the article yesterday talking about how the school resource officers, you know, that their job title being compromised, which ironically was just, didn't we just celebrate, I think, School Resource Officer Appreciation Week last week? It's really disappointing to know that the trust that I place in the school board, that I leave my kids there more than I get to even see them at home, that my children, that everybody's children here in Palm Coast, like, are they, are they not worth protecting? I mean, you also have to understand, like, these are the, this is the generation that's going to take care of us and we can't take care of them. They're not worth, and not only that, but what about the deputies' jobs? Where do that, where does that go? Does that just disappear? Do they also not, the, the relationship that these children, I mean, I'm, I'm a single mom of two kids, my kid's dad's not really involved. Some of these children, this, the resource officers, that's apparent to them, that's a missing parent to see and have that pride as a position, to see, you know, how many kids say they want to be a police officer when they grow up? But yet, they don't even have anybody protecting them. Unfortunately, like, I don't even like letting my kids go out and play where I can't even see them down the road. And I'm there, and I'm supposed to blindly just send my kids, letting, who knows what will happen? And I just feel that this is a priority that really needs to change. We have priorities of every other thing but our children, the, the foundation that's going to take care of us one day. And I just don't understand where the priorities have changed. And I really hope that soon rather than later, that they will change. Because I don't want to get a phone call, I don't want to get, excuse me, a phone call or an email hours after something happens that could have been prevented possibly. after something happens that could have been prevented possibly, when, you know, there's incidents that happen all the time. My daughter's in middle school, do you know how many incidents I get an email about that I don't even know about till hours later? I mean, and if there's a resource officer there, what's going to happen when there's not one there? So I just really hope that before a situation happens to my child, my child, or to someone else's child, a child here, that something can really be taken into consideration to protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward for public comment?
That seems to conclude comment.
Okay, seeing no one approach, we will bring it back and close public comment. So that will lead us to closing comments of the board.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm thrilled to share some of the recent events at our school and some of the upcoming events as well. So to begin, earlier this month, our FPC multiple data competed at February regionals alongside Mathan's High School at Seminole High School. And up against hundreds of students from 11 schools across Florida, we managed to place fifth overall as a school within the competition. And our students in every single division placed in both individuals and teams among some of the top schools within our region. On the very same day, our AFTRTC unit at FPC also shined in the annual cowboy roundup drill competition. We were able to get first place in armed exhibition, as well as first place in individual drill regulation, and second place in armed regulation team. We would like to thank the school board for allowing us to have these educational enrichment opportunities and for us to compete across the nation, or across our region, across a lot of different Florida schools. Additionally, our boys wrestling team also won the five-star tournament in the land, and the girls also placed second at the clay rotary invitational. And following these successes, FPC actually hosted a senior supportive Oscars night to just highlight some of the achievements we've had within our senior program. And our, and the following night, we also had a program of choice night where a lot of, where hundreds of students were able to observe our program of choice and see the future careers. More recently, last week was actually our Navy week, and we are honored to have sailors from all over the Navy, whether it be from their robotics team, the USS Constitution, the National Naval History Heritage Command, and the U.S. Navy ceremonial guard. They all came to our school and were able to talk to our students about a potential prayer cafe, and we were also able to observe a very nice rifle and bayonet routine by the ceremonial guard, which performs nationwide. Unfortunately, Stanley wasn't able to be here, but he wanted me to let everyone know that the Mathan's Theatre Company is having a Mamma Mia musical from February 22nd to March 2nd on the weekends for $10 online or at the door. He wants to, he wanted to encourage everyone to enjoy the musical and have some fun if they are able to go. And lastly, we do have a teen town hall on mental wellness, mental health, and resiliency next week on February 28th. Again, active participants will receive five hours for community service. And beyond that, thank you all and good night.
Great job. Good job. My comments are going to be brief, but I just want to address some of the county conversation that's floating around. We don't know all of the information at this point in time. All we've done is received the letter. So I'm sure Ms. Moore is going to maybe give a quick update tonight, but we'll be meeting with the county. I think there's more information that we need to learn. And we're not cutting that, those dollars. We're not making the decision to cut those dollars. We value our SROs, so I'm sure we'll work through this and everything will just be, just fine. That's it.
Okay, just following that same line, I did attend the county commission meeting last night, and at the end of the meeting, the commission had conversation about this letter. And what it addresses is what they call their legacy items. And these are items that the county has been paying for, for many years. And they think and they're worried that they won't have the funding because it's based on the fact that Tallahassee is looking to increase our homestead by 25,000. And by doing that, if that passes legislation, that's going to mean they're going to get that much less tax money. And so that's why I think there's this initial reaction, and they've talked about this possibility for years. It's not brand new. It's just the first time that we received actual information, and our superintendent will gladly be taking care of that. But it's nothing more than a starting point. This is nothing more than a starting point. They're not demanding, they're not going to pay, and we certainly don't want to get rid of our SROs. And I want you all to relax and realize that our SROs are important to our, our schools and our kids and our staff, and we love our SROs. We're not getting ready, ready to get rid of them in any way, and they are expensive. And they're much more valuable than guardians, because guardians cannot, they can't go in and break up a fight. All they can do is react to, to an active shooter. But our SROs help. They help maintain stability in all of our schools, and it's so nice to see the little, our little ones watching the uniform and wanting to be like them, and that's a good thing. So we'll get there. It's just, we just started the whole process, and we'll see where it goes. But yes, we understand the concern, and our board will address it properly. Finally, well, a couple of things. The Ed Foundation's Mardi Gras was an awesome time. If you ever have an opportunity to participate in that fundraiser, I highly recommend it because I guarantee you, you will enjoy the camaraderie, the food, and, and, you know, the activities. It's, it's just a lot of fun. We also had an opportunity to celebrate some of our, well, actually Ms. Moore and Kathy Hyder from the commission, because they're trailblazers. And they had a wonderful celebration at the hammock that we were able to be there, and our own Dr. Conklin did the introduction of Ms. Moore and did a wonderful job, and it's a well-deserved honor, because they are trailblazers here in Flagler County. And I love the one statement that said, let's hope we get to the day where there are no more trailblazers, there are no more ceilings to be broken, that everybody is treated equally. And I really live for that, that timeframe. And I think that'll do it for me. Thank you.
Just really quickly, tonight, it's my understanding that we lost a member of the BTMS family recently, and I just wanted, very long-term member of the...
Ms. Celine Jocks.
Thirty-plus years, I believe.
Thirty-four years with Flagler Schools.
And I just wanted to give my public condolences to the family, friends, and certainly everybody at BTMS. You can't put in 34 years and not make some really big connections. And so just, again, public condolences on that. But to, I just also wanted to say again, congratulations to our spelling bee champ and welcome to our new assistant principal. So some losses that are really hard, but also some great joys. So anyway, Flagler forward, have a good night. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just echo some of the comments up here. When we sit in these seats, we a lot of times have to take a step back and be like, okay, we've got to get all the information, which we don't have yet, but our public is also owed an explanation. And I am confused about this letter as much as everyone else. I don't know how they came to this conclusion without a board meeting or a vote, because I feel like it would, it would be like the three of, three of us just making a decision and not telling two other members or something. But the safety of our children is the utmost importance. I have children in school also, and if they really have a $200 million budget and the first things they want to cut is safety for children, I find that so completely out of touch, and I condemn that action absolutely. But I know that we will always, that is a nonpartisan issue, the five of us want to keep our kids safe. So I think that's it, and thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, I'd also like to just send my condolences to our long-term employee there that lost and for their family and just praying for peace in this moment of grief. Also, I do want to congratulate again Superintendent Moore for her honors of, for her historic treatments along with Ms. Councilman Kathy Hyder. It was a wonderful morning of celebration of some great things happening in Flagler County. I also just wanted to touch on, also I wanted to, again, express our great gratitude to our SRDs here at Flagler Schools. You are valued and appreciated, and as you can see tonight, many parents are, feel safe sending their kids to school because of the efforts that you do. And I know your hearts are in it. When I'm on campus, I can just see the, the care and love for our students here, and they make it their highest priority to make sure they go home safe to their parents. So I'm truly grateful for them. And just to touch on the letter from the county, it definitely was a blindsiding moment, because again, this had not been workshopped, we really didn't kind of know what was going on in their head. And I can see why some of the public was confused and concerned, because it was written in a way that kind of made it seem almost like they'd made up their mind, and so that was very concerning. And the, but I do believe that the county does care for our students as we do, and I believe that we will make progress through conversation and meeting on this, this matter. So as others have said, I'd said, let's, let's wait and see and let this flush out and see what it means, because although these are referred to as legacy projects, I, I really see them more as investments in the future. And I think if we asked the citizens of Flagler County, what they'd want their legacy to be are students to have a place to go after school for extra activities and be, not be on the streets, for students to be able to have after, educational opportunities after school at some of our venues that we use some of this money to. And most importantly, a legacy of having the safest schools in the United States. Thank you.
Good evening. I did receive the letter. As Ms. Matthews said, she's absolutely right, my meeting's on the 28th. I had to double check it, I'm like, oh, she's right, it is on, on the 28th. No, no, no. No, no. Yes, no, 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 not at all. So we will have our first initial meeting on the 28th. Once we have that meeting, we have an understanding for what their idea, plan, suggestions are, that information, of course, will become public for, for everyone to know what their suggestions are for some sort of transition plan. As everyone has stated, our school resource deputies are so important to our schools, and it is a shared commitment as a community to how our, how safe our schools are. It is a shared commitment. And so we will go to the table and have a collaborative conversation. You know, it's ironic that the school resource deputy for my own personal children are here today, he's here today, and I appreciate you and all that he does, but it's so much more than just safety. When I get to drive up and see him there in the mornings to, for my kids and your kids to know who they are and build relationships with them, as an individual that was at a school with an amazing resource deputy, just the lessons that the students learned, I created a folder that said, "He also," and I would just put random things in there that were so much more than just ensuring that our school was safe, but it was really about around those relationships that were built with our, with our kids. And so as the email stated, it is a meeting, an invitation for a meeting, and I would hope that the shared commitment that we as a community need to have around ensuring that our schools are safe will, will remain. And I would hope that that would be evident in the meeting that we have. We have a great relationship, working relationship with our county staff members, so that's what I anticipate. I anticipate it to be a collaborative meeting that where our legacies are truly defined, and our legacies, as Mr. Furry has stated, includes ensuring that our students are safe. I hope everybody has a great night, and we'll see you again in a couple of weeks.
All right, thank you all, this meeting is adjourned.